I'm going to call the meeting to order at six twelve. Welcome everyone, please rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated.
I want to grab your mics. Do yours as the only one I can reach.
Oh.
I thought it was just my personality, just turned it on.
Just light it up.
Alrighty, I do need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to public input. Do we have any public input this evening?
That I perceive.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to participate in public input that did not have an opportunity to fill out a form? Okay. Moving on to our action items, we have the bus route revision approval for Timberlake High School and Timberlake Middle School. Jessica, would you like to speak to this?
Um, so, uh, this is adding a new route. We had talked about that previously, um, in our process of trying to hire a driver. We, I did share with the board previously, we had hired two that were going through training. Unfortunately, one of them's not going to be able to finish training, so we're in the process of trying to find another one. But we do have one that'll hopefully be done later this month. Um, so, being prepared for that driver coming onboard, we have a proposed new route for Timberlake High School and Timberlake Middle School. It reassigned stops from existing routes to help reduce student ride times. Um, we can also reinstate some previously removed stops along Vantage Road and Diagonal Road, um, which we've gotten quite a few calls on. We've talked about it extensively with the board, that those are some areas that we need to make sure we don't cut again in the future. Um, this new route also allows for some necessary adjustments to the Spirit Lake Elementary Special Education Route that we have, that'll help streamline that route as well. Um, the route timing hasn't been finalized, just because we ha- we need to send the bus out to actually practice the stops to get a full route time, so it's not reflected yet on the document that you will see later this evening that compares routes from this year to last year. Um, so, our request is that we, uh, have the route approved, so once we have the driver ready to go, we can do the bids for the routes, so that we can get it in parents' hands, so that they know about the changes and the, the stop time changes, um, and then, yeah, get it rolling.
Okay, so, my only question is, I'm just trying to understand this. Um, because we're adding a new route.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but what was provided was just route changes, so is there a route in here that's?
So page three, um, shows all the stops on the new route. Um, page two.
Oh.
Um, was all the, what we're pulling from all the different areas and what we're adding. But page three is actually where all the stops will be on this new route.
Okay, so, this would be route number?
Uh, I think it's gonna be, I think it'll be twenty eight, no, twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay.
Don't quote me on that.
Okay, no, not.
Please, but I believe that's what it'll be.
Okay.
Uh, but it, it actually adds, uh, quite a few stops back in along Diagonal, um, so we're very excited about that.
That's a good thing.
Um, and then that stopped at Vantage, so that we're not stopping at, um, not dropping kids at Apple Elementary anymore. Or, I think, uh, it was the Dollar General.
It was Dollar General.
So we'll be able to run back down to Vantage.
Old Dollar General.
Yep, Dollar General.
Alright. Does anyone have any questions?
No, I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The Legal Services RFQ. Do we have any conversation or discussion we need to have on this?
Nope, I think it's a good start, so.
I would like to know where you are going to publish the RFQ.
So it'll be on the district website, we'll also post in Quarterly Press, which is standard. I could add it to Spokane, the spokesman's, spokesman review. Um, and then we will be reaching out to some law firms, um, that we know work with other governmental entities, um, to invite them to review the solicitation.
Okay, um, are we going to be doing any publishing in the south? Down in the Boise area?
Um.
Where more firms are that actually do?
I have a list of firms that we'll be sending emails to.
Okay.
Um, we hadn't looked into, I don't think we've ever published in a paper down there, I can look for one, if that's what you'd like.
Well, I mean, I don't know if it's, because we're publishing up here.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if in order to solicit for services, it has to be through publication? Because you're just gonna be sending out emails, so?
Yeah, so the email will say, um, we have a RFQ available on the district website, we would like you to review and respond if it's so interested. Um, but I do have a list of law firms down there that do work with governmental entities that I will be reaching out to. Um, so it'll refer them back to the website, instead of providing them the packet. Um, but I can definitely find a paper, I just may have to adjust the time and the RFQ a little bit.
Okay.
For that publication, so. We, we are required to publish twice for this one, so.
Okay.
I think I built in enough lead time that I should still be able to meet those publication timelines down there.
Okay. I just know we have to get out of our little bubble up here.
Nope.
If we're gonna actually look for additional or new services.
Yep.
Any other questions? Conversation?
No.
Okay.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, so the request for qualifications for CMGC was at our last meeting? Um, and we, uh, did not approve it?
It was tabled.
Tabled, okay.
Um, trustee Jones asked me to bring it back to this meeting, um, after the meeting. I did not know that he wasn't gonna be here. Um, but I did try to provide some additional information on the differences between the design bid build process and the CMGC, and the reasons why it's the preferred method for the scope of the work that we're having done. This is really just an ask to publish it and see what bids we get in on it. Those bids will come back to the board for review and approval before we sign any agreements. Um, and we can even at that time decide not to do anything. So really, the only cost associated with this is the publication cost at this point in time. Um, I feel very strongly that this is something that the district needs to look at. Um, with the scope of the work, the tight timelines, the number of projects that we're trying to accomplish this next summer, it is too much for our facilities department to manage all at once. If we were doing one, we could potentially keep it just the one. But we have four major projects on a very tight timeline that we would like to get accomplished next summer, um, to show the state that we're moving forward appropriately with the school modernization funds that were, um, given to the district. Um, the CMGC model really does help the district as far as risk mitigation. Um, with the dollar amount associated with these projects, it is what the state recommends, um, and all the training that we did is this, this particular model. So, it's just a request to go out to see what, um, firms respond, and then what their rates are. The other thing that I would like to point out with this one, we do get to negotiate a guaranteed maximum price on the projects. So if it goes over that GMP, then the contractor that we selected has to cover that out of their own pocket. Um, so that's something that we don't get to do with a design bid build process.
Talk about loans, good or bad?
Oh yeah, that's the other thing. We do not, we're not, with the CMGC process, we don't have to take the lowest responding bidder. We can actually take into account some other factors. So it allows us to make sure that we're not picking a company, um, that's lowballing the project.
Yeah, no, respectfully, I don't know that, I mean, I think we are all, uh, aware that just because it's lowest number, you may not get.
Yes, we've learned that.
We've learned it the hard way.
So. So really, it's just.
We've advocated sometimes for higher.
Yes, absolutely.
Have been chopped down for it, so.
So that's the nice thing with this, with Idaho Code, the statute does, definitely allows us to, um, pick the most capable contractor, not just the cheapest contractor, so.
I think the, the one, one difficult thing is that they can choose their subs, and?
There's always some participation from the district on that. Um, we can say, we don't want to work with company X, Y, or Z, and if we have a justified reason, we can tell them no. Like, there is a couple subs that I would absolutely say, the district has not had a good experience with them, we don't want them to have a part in this job.
Okay.
Um, and, so we do get the say in that. Um, the nice thing about it is they do work tandem with us, hand in hand. And so Tim, our facilities director, Mr. Hig, will still be involved in all the product, our projects, and will still be walking sites and stuff like that. It's just, it wouldn't require him to be onsite every day, all the time.
Doing with all the issues.
Um, and running the district, because he is over our busy time anyway. Summer's when we get to get into schools and get all those deferred maintenance projects done, so, uh, it would allow him to manage all of that as well, effectively.
So this is just gonna go out and see what we get back?
Yep.
Yep.
And then we, uh, every time we do something like this, it always comes back to the board with the rubric of what we evaluate the bids on, who participated in that evaluation, and then the recommendation. Um, and then at that point, it's on the, it's up to the board to approve or deny, or make a suggestion for something else. But really, truly, this is just like the Legal Services RFQ, where we're just going out to see who responds, and what kind of response we get.
With this one, as well, where are we marketing to, I mean?
Um, this one will go, again, local, on the website. Um, we, uh, can, we're spokesman review as well. And then the architect that we have on these projects will put it on their side as well.
Okay. Excuse me.
Move to approve it.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that's it for me tonight.
That is?
The Key Club Overnight, uh, the Key Club is wanting to go overnight. What? Because it wasn't, um, crystal clear, it was a little confusing. Uh, there's a fiscal consideration of a hundred and fifty dollars per student, with expenses also paid by Panhandle, Kiwanis, and Club Account. And then, on their application, uh, it says, what is the cost? It says usually a hundred and fifty per student, with expenses also paid by Handa- Panhandle, Kiwanis. What I'm trying to figure out, oh, and then it says, and Club Account fundraising.
Yep.
Is the district putting forward any money for this trip?
The expectation is we don't put any money for, for extracurricular.
I understand that, but the way this is worded, it's very unclear if there is a financial consideration or burden to the district. That's my only frustration with what we were presented with.
Chairman Thompson, uh, this was not sent, this particular one was not sent to me, and I, I didn't review it as of, and, uh, time of merit was already on the agenda, I'll be honest with you. I can, uh, we can table and, and we can get those clarifying questions for you.
Yeah, I just don't know what, with expenses also paid by?
Right.
Yeah.
Because, does that mean that we're paying part of it and they're paying part of it, or?
Right. She's coming back.
I'm coming back. Uh, Jessica Grissom, CFO. I forgot to introduce myself earlier, sorry.
It's okay.
Um, so, I can tell you from a district purchasing procedure, this would not be something we would approve. We would expect the SBA account to cover it, because this is not one of the approved, um, purchases under the co-curriculars and athletic budget. So, um, it would be kicked back to the school to cover the cost.
Okay, except when it's being brought forward to us, there's supposed to be a very clear.
Completely understand, I didn't see this one either, I apologize.
Not a problem.
I can just let you know that, that's our process, we would not cover the cost of it.
Okay.
Even if they asked.
Yep.
That hurts.
But you're recommending us to approve it, so?
Since it's not happening till March, I move that we table it until we get a, a definitive answer on the, where they intend the money to go from.
So we just want detailed, uh, how, details on how they actually pay us for this? And no expectations from the district to cover this, is that correct?
Correct.
Did you get that down? Thank you, we'll get it for you.
I'll second that. We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone, or? What do I say?
Any further discussion?
No.
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
There you go.
Thank you. Um, next is the Mountain View High School graduation. Um, looks like they are moving their venue from Real Life North, uh, to Post Falls Campus.
Chairman Thompson, I'd like, uh, Assistant Superintendent Massey to speak to you.
Yeah, Jake Massey, Assistant Superintendent. Um, there's really not a lot to share here, other than the exciting fact that Mountain View has just outgrown that venue. I think that's amazing. And so Mr. Yuzi approached me early in the year and just said, hey, Jake, what's the possibility of looking at this with Post Falls? And they were pretty accommodating for us, but they just cannot do the original date that we had planned.
Okay.
So, that's all that's happening here.
That is exciting news.
Thank you, Jake.
Do we have any questions or conversation?
Nope.
Nope.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, next, we have, under policy, the forty-six hundred volunteer assistant, forty-six hundred P volunteer assistant procedures, and forty-six hundred volunteer assistant application. All of those were brought to first read at the last board meeting. Um, and they're being brought this time for approval. Do we have any conversations, questions?
No, I think that that was covered pretty well when we were starting here last time.
No, I'm good.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to approve all three, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the softball field trip.
The only change is that, uh, they're not gonna use district transportation. They'll self-transport.
Um, great, for the self, self-transporting. Um, do we know what the district's liability is on self-transporting?
I don't at this point, uh?
They sign a waiver.
Yeah.
Rock-solid waiver.
It's, it's in our policy.
Yeah.
Okay.
I knew it was in the policy.
Yeah, the parents sign off on it.
Yeah.
Charter air travel, are they flying? That would be fun. Do we have any conversations?
It's supposed to be charter bus, air travel, or tran- parent transport. There's, there's three options there, but this form comes, comes weird. Yeah, because the other one is.
Check boxes.
School bus, activity van, or other, and they chose other. So, it's just funny how they're.
We need checkboxes.
They present on the box.
We really need checkboxes. About the boxes.
Formatting on the form, maybe?
Could be improved. Alrighty, well, do we have any conversation, discussion?
I do not have anything, no.
I'm good.
And we have one female shop around for the girls' team?
Just three.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Alright, moving down into discussion items. IBB?
Yeah, we have not met since, uh, um, well.
Okay.
So, uh, we have a scheduled meeting on December twelfth. I'll be able to share information on the board meeting on the seventeenth.
Okay, are you only meeting once a month?
We are, but we can, we can, if we, obviously, we have issues that we need to meet more, we can meet more. But right now, in the procedures, it says we'll at least meet once a month.
Okay. Well, I was just gonna have her remove it from the agenda, but I think it should stay just.
I think it should stay.
Well, that was what you guys asked for.
Well, in that way, too, if any of us have.
Questions.
Yeah, or we've looked through the negotiated, if, if any of us have something that we want to talk about, I think having it on there, just as that reminder of, hey, we should be thinking, always thinking about this.
Right.
So that those, um, topics that may want to be addressed can be addressed at any, at any meeting.
Right, and, um, I know we have executive session on the negotiated agreement. Because, uh, trustee would like to be able to talk about the language within the negotiated agreement, and in reviewing the statute, it appears like we can, um, because it is an agreement that we want to bring forward. According to legal counsel, we can't do that. I understand why, um, the logic to me is not there. But I don't know if we want to hold a work session for that, or? Because I personally believe that we should, uh, be entitled to work through the negotiated agreement. It's a language specific to what we want to propose.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because I think we've kind of gotten into this conundrum of, um, IBB, which is the process to coming to the agreement of the negotiated agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
But, with the struggles we've had for years on the language of the negotiated agreement, I think if we start out the gate with the right language, that's, could solve so many problems.
Mm-hmm.
And, as a board, I believe we have the right to, uh, work on the language. But I don't know, I don't know what your thought process is on that.
Chairman Thompson, I know when I first got here, we stayed, as one of our later meetings, we did work through that language, uh, a little bit. So I know that we have a, a pretty good working copy of, of what some of the things the board was laying out, because we made, we made an executive session, obviously, and, uh, you kind of tied through that, I remember that, so.
Well, that was language to go back to them.
Right.
Which got tossed away.
Right.
So, that's where, if we take the twenty-five, twenty-six and begin building on that, with, from the board's perspective?
Yeah.
I think the board needs to do that work.
I think it's great work.
Um, so, would you be in agreement with, uh, working through the language within the negotiated agreement? Because to, respectfully, to me, it is counteroffer, because we're being told that we have to work off of the negotiated agreement that was approved, because there shouldn't be much that, um, is problematic in that agreement, even though we didn't, I mean, we, we did approve it, but we did not approve it, and then we made changes, and then it was canceled.
Yeah, I think that we need to sit down and, and what pieces of that language need to be discussed?
Right.
And have, and have that discussion, yeah.
Okay.
It would be very, very helpful in the whole.
Okay, so?
As a board, not as a IBBT.
No, no, I absolutely get that, a hundred percent.
Okay.
And then you can take it to the.
Yep, exactly right.
Yep.
Right.
PST team.
PST, yeah.
PST. PST team.
Yep.
PST.
Yep.
PST. Team, team.
Yep. Thompson team, there you go.
Team, team.
Okay, alright, um. Okay, don't, where was I, there we are.
Policy protocol.
Alright, so, policy protocol, um. These are the protocols that have been in place, um, they were established, uh, by Assistant Superintendent, uh, Dr. Pasley. And we had been using them, um, but then, with the change of, uh, administration, the onboarding of the new clerk, we've just sort of been creating a whole bunch of new ways that we're doing things.
Okay.
Um, and I know that, uh, Ramona was really, um, trustee Grissom would like us to go back to these, um, protocols. Um, I, as well, there's some of them that I, I do think were extremely beneficial. Such as notifying the parents, uh, through a Sky Alert, um, as opposed to just putting policies up on the website. Um. And just the streamlining of how we went through policies, because we, we, um, seem to just sort of randomly be choosing what we're working on. And we'll work on one policy, and sometimes we'll come back the next week, and that's not the policy we start out on. Um, and then, it's, it seems to be, I feel personally, that we're kind of operating in a crisis mode.
Okay.
Um, which may be a stretch of that word, but when there doesn't seem to be a flow of consistency, I feel like we're operating maybe more reactively than we are, um, with a method. Um, additionally, I know, uh, Assistant Superintendent Pasley was very good at getting feedback from administration. At least, that's what we were always told. Um, and now we have actually a whole administrative draft policy that's written, that I have to compare with the actual draft that we're supposed to be working on. It is kind of cumbersome, in my opinion. Um, I don't understand the whys behind that, but it's what's been doing, because, um, Mr. Taylor would, is really active in trying to pursue that, um, everybody has an input, um, especially at the administrative level. So, I don't know, um, I don't know what the solution is here. But, we do have protocols that we haven't been following. I do think it would be beneficial to go back to following them. Um. But this was something that was brought up. A trustee Grissom did ask for these to be brought forward. So, as this is a discussion item.
Yeah. Does this outline? What is the process now for, for selecting what pro- what policies are going to be?
What I usually do is, uh, based off of anything that's brought from the board that's been requested, uh, anything that a, um, staff member or community member has requested. Um, anything that comes up through staff members.
Which is in the policy, according to procedures, she's following those.
Okay. So what are we doing to, do we ha- is there, is there maybe a, a spreadsheet or a tracking mechanism for, you know, if, if one comes up for review, where, where it is in that process and the status of it, to track, to say, okay, this one's complete, we're, we're now gonna move on to this one? Like, is there any mechanism for tracking, like, the status?
Well, I know.
To follow them all the way through the process?
I know what had been in place was there was a spreadsheet that Lynn was managing. Um, Dr. Pasley, Assistant Superintendent, anyhow. Um, because there are still policies from two thousand and seven that this board has not reviewed.
Mm-hmm.
And so she was insistent on making sure that we got through all the annual policies, and we would just constantly be circling that, but then she. And we would just constantly be circling that, but then she'd throw in some of the 07s.
Add some of those older ones.
She's like, we really need to look at these.
So at the bottom of every agenda, in that spreadsheet that I created that has every single policy in there, it has them.
Can you show us?
I would have to log into it, but I don't think I can show you. But you remember the thing you clicked on the other day that pulled up all the policies?
Right, that is a list of policies.
So that has all of our policies on there.
Right.
Yeah, and it also has the dates that they were updated and all of that stuff.
Right.
But when one comes up for review, are we tracking that through the review process to completion?
I was until it was kind of not utilized anymore. I had brought it up at the very beginning, we used it maybe twice and then it was no longer utilized. So I've been tracking personally through our agendas. It gets taken off anytime that we're finished with them and then we take meeting notes.
It gets taken off of?
The agenda. So the next agenda won't have anything that we're finished with.
Here, you can show.
So this one hasn't been updated because like you said, we haven't even utilized it since I created it. But it has the annual policies and shows when it was approved, what we did with that, anything that was currently under review.
Well, wouldn't you be the one that would be monitoring that and updating it?
Yeah, but you didn't utilize it at all, so I figured.
How would I be utilizing it?
Because we were going through it during policy meetings and stuff like that, when we would click and pull them up. But we didn't use them at all, so it's just kind of been tossed to the wayside. So I can go back to updating these and keeping them refreshed and everything. But if you click on it, like if you go here, it's going to take you to every policy that we have. When's the last time that's been updated?
This is what I'm, what I'm wanting to make sure that we are doing and tracking is the, the under review.
Yep.
So that we know when it's.
Right.
Yeah, I can keep updating that, that fine. Like I said, I've been keeping track through minutes and through other, the minutes in the agenda.
But then you would have to go back to previous, previous agendas to go find where some. This is, this is a one look view of where all of the policies are at in that review process. With, and so I think that that should be.
Well, I think what may have occurred is that may have come forward. The agenda that we've had for two years has been this ongoing rolling agenda. Where there, it's like, these are the policies that we're going to be working on. And then the policies would be added, you know, that needed to be at the bottom so that we would continue to work down that chain. But then there was this spreadsheet and it was, it's, it was attached.
It's attached to every single board book?
Of this protocol.
The protocol, yeah. There's a spreadsheet in there that Lynn had been working on with the, all the different ones and it had all of that information. It wasn't brought to policy committee, it was just for the oversight of her and the clerk to know where things were at and what we're doing.
Okay.
So it, there may have been miscommunication because it wouldn't, I, I don't know that I would have said, don't track the policies.
You have it, but there's been so much pushback on policy in any sort of thing that's been, you know, even brought as a suggestion. That I've kind of just really backed off a lot of it. Because I don't want to upset you guys and I don't want it to, you know. Become this big huge ordeal. But without having the information on how it's done prior, you know, and.
Well, and I guess that's a disadvantage to us as a board. Because not knowing that the prior clerk hadn't, because she, the prior clerk worked with the, with the Assistant Superintendent very well. And, and was part of this until she moved. And then she wasn't part of it and the Assistant Superintendent just managed it all. So by you not having access to what was being done. And not fully understanding that you didn't have it, when you walk into a new meeting and everything has changed without even. An understanding of why, that, that's just challenging. But yeah, we have to track when we're, where we're at on all policies.
Personally tracking, but I can definitely update that sheet and have that, no problem.
Okay, that would be great. And I do believe we need to go back to sending the policies out for community input and parent review after they've been.
So I did speak with technology and I had to look into it, there's no email list.
Yeah, from what I understand, it was sent out through Sky Alert.
Correct, and I, I know in the beginning you had stated that you didn't want to just inundate parents with all these unnecessary Sky Alerts. But hearing back from the community that they're just not being communicated with. And their, they, I mean, I feel like the district has this expectation that they're supposed to know to go to the website. To try and find the policy.
Yes, sir.
Because in all fairness, when I went to, I'm like, I don't even know what to go to look for.
There's some, there's some trackers online, policy trackers, they're not very much, just keeps track of all your policies. Maybe should check into it, it's a program.
I think we have a lot of programs. How much is not very much?
For something that could be tracked on a spreadsheet, I'm sorry.
No, fine, it's like a hundred bucks, I think.
Well, we cut things that were $50, so it's in the budget process, so that's.
But thank you for finding that, I'm sorry.
Hitting again.
I know.
So would utilizing Class Dojo to reach out to the parents to inform them of policy updates? Be acceptable as a alternative to constantly blowing up their phones with Skylights?
What are we constantly blowing up their phones with Skylights with?
Well, it's not about blowing up the Skylar, it's about making it very pertinent. Like if we have a situation where lockdowns come, that comes through Skylark, please guys, just make sure I'm on the right track here. Whether obviously now, that's something that we, and we want to make sure if that comes out, they're not being dismissive. They're like, oh, wait a second, this is, this isn't a regular thing. Class Dojo is, and again, Jake, you can speak on this too, Class Dojo is a great way to get ahold of parents. And it doesn't blow up, you know, things, but that was just one recommendation.
Yeah, and I apologize, I don't mean to contest, contest this in a public meeting. But I, Class Dojo is pretty limited to not a lot of parents in the, in the greater scope of things. So I think that would be a limitation, it is a great tool that maybe we could take advantage of. But I don't, I don't think it would replace a Sky Alert. I do know, just again, from feedback that we've received from our parents and from community. That we do want to be mindful of how we package this feedback. And so if we are going to utilize Sky Alert again, that's acceptable, we're happy to do that. But we might want to really consider, are we sending out feedback, request for feedback on a bi-weekly basis? Probably not on a monthly basis, that's probably too far. But that way it's not so many little messages over and over again.
It traditionally went out on Friday. I mean, we, we held policy committee, then everything was done what it was. And then if there were policies that were ready for parent feedback. Because right now it's, the way it works is administration's doing whatever they're doing with the policy. It comes to the committee, if we make any changes, then it goes back to administration. I don't know when it goes out to the parents because it's going on to the website. And then I have, I think, once, maybe twice, received feedback. But not like we used to get on policies. And then it's coming before the board. And it's just, I know nobody likes change, everybody is resistant to change, I totally get that. But when I hear parents are like, I don't hear anything, I don't know. And, you know, I liked being able to just go check and read and, you know, feel like I'm in the loop. Even though I may not come to the meeting. And that's, to me, really a disservice when we always talk about we're partnering with our families and.
And that's, that's really good feedback for us to hear too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we're not hearing that from parents. And so it's good, it's good to hear that information and have it. The other side of it that we're trying to battle, because I don't, I don't want this to feel like a push back and forth, we're not trying to push on yet. Is we have an ever increasing number of our parents who un-enroll from Sky Alerts. That, that's just a present issue that we have. So whenever we do have an unexpected early release or a snow day or something going on at a school. It's, it's sometimes surprising how many parents just aren't even opted into those alerts anymore. Now, that's their choice, right? We can't control that. We do just want to be mindful of how we use it.
Oh, I know, I'm, I know, I was not happy when I was, had a student in the district. And we were getting constant alerts about levy stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Made me not happy.
Sure.
Because that's not, it shouldn't have been used for that at all.
It's a great tool.
But, so I, I understand that and I know that that was something that we were like, do not use Sky Alert for that kind of stuff. Please use it for emergency purposes. So that's why I just want to find out how we can.
Sure.
Touch the most people without.
Yeah, fine tune.
Without using Sky Alert.
And that's what's.
And that's why, why we wanted to find, I. I know that there isn't a list, but does somebody have the, like, an old email that was sent out by Dr. Pasley? Asking for that, that they could pull the, all the people that that was emailed to?
We did look and everything went to a blind copied list. And so again, we, we can go through the process of having tech continue, actually, continue to have tech going through the process of taking that up. But it was also from a no reply email, which is the hint that we might, it might not be on our servers if it was a Sky Alert distribution.
Right.
So in response to that, I started a signup sheet. That was popping up on our district website with a pop-up to see if there was even anybody who would sign up for it. I checked yesterday, there has been five signups.
Okay, that's five more than what we had.
And I think that's fantastic and it's, it's a good start to it. And I think that we can, you know, use something like this versus, like I said. I mean, as a parent, if I were to receive a ton of text messages about policies to go review.
But I, I, a ton of texts, I, yeah.
Once a week is excessive.
You know, and I, I do think that we can be creative in our use of Sky Alert too.
Right.
Maybe once a month, we send out a Sky Alert that says, hey, remember, this is open for anybody, here's the link to sign up.
Sign up, yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Because I mean, I don't know any parent that knows that they need to go to the website to sign up for this. If we haven't told them, you need to go to the website to sign up for this. I mean, we're hoping that everyone's checking the website every day.
Send out in Class Dojo to, to send the link to the signup.
We, we could. And on our social media as well.
Yeah, again, the limitation with Class Dojo is it's going to target just elementary.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Still, I like what you put, it's still more than what we had, you know, so. And I can see where, if we're not wearing a regular Sky Alert, you know, where she's just sending out, maybe once, I liked your recommendation. And once a month, hey, look, there's a signup sheet if you're interested, then they can sign up for it. And then they, you'll send them emails, right, Sierra, in regards to feedback on it, I could see that would be useful.
And it's hardly happening.
And start building that.
We could, we could do, you know, to sign up for the policy committee, to sign up for long range planning. To sign, you know, and have like a once a month, hey, don't forget.
Remember these opportunities.
Yes, that we want people to sign up to do this.
Yeah.
Then they're not getting that weekly thing for every policy, but.
I just know.
They're being told, hey, go.
Yeah.
Yeah, and maybe that's something that we can all make sure that if somebody is approaching us and saying, hey, I want, I don't get those. Go in and sign up, so.
So a few things that we can do immediately, obviously, we can put it on our social media, we can put the link to the signup, we can do that immediately. I can work with Sierra on regards to maybe a Sky Alert on signing up. Would that be, would the board be okay with that?
Yep.
Yep. That'd be us to start, and like you said, if we can get five more, 10 more, that'd be great. Jake, thank you for that, appreciate it.
Okay, do we need to have any further conversation at this moment?
Good.
Good.
And thank you for what you, I T and C, if there was anything. Okay, so we have the route comparisons.
This was kind of neat to see the, okay, the apples to apples.
Right.
Comparing the two, the two different lists of routes.
Yeah.
The summer did. Just shake your head.
Our Assistant Transportation Supervisor Michael DeBrer prepared this.
This is pretty nice.
He did add in the length of time that was requested on there and then the highlight of the routes that were removed. Some of the stops were absorbed into other routes, some of them were removed completely. It's apples to apples, but it's also apples to oranges, just because there is a lot of changes.
I am just curious, because it looks like, I mean, there was significant reconstruction basically up north. Why, why, why wasn't it, do you know? Because I know not, maybe you didn't necessarily do this, do you know why there wasn't? I mean, anything done in the south, I mean.
There was a lot that impacted Lakeland Middle School, Lakeland High School. A, a lot of the, the cuts were, the bigger cuts were Spirit Lake Elementary. Because we were busing so many in town that were within that mile and a half mark. So that's where it feels like a disproportionate amount up north. It's just because of those elementary routes that were not running anymore because they are walking distance to school per the statute. So it does feel a little disproportionate, but there were quite a few adjustments down here as well.
Right, according to the, the colored, there were only two. And then, unless I'm not reading this correctly, which is always probable. But then there was a significant amount for Ethel Elementary compared to Spirit Lake.
Right, and those Ethel ones were absorbed in other, some of those Ethel ones were absorbed in other routes. And then some, like the Vantage Homestead Road that we're reinstating, it's being billed as a TMS, THS, but it also does.
They consolidated.
They consolidated.
Some of the routes were consolidated, so even though they show that they were removed.
Right.
They weren't actually totally removed, they were just.
Some of the stops.
So that we don't have 10 kids on a bus anymore, we have 30 kids on a bus, so.
They're very full buses.
That was a big part of it.
The other thing, part of that consolidation is we really did try to stick with the state mile and a half. And so some of the stops were expanded, so there weren't maybe in a radius that we had 10 stops before, maybe we now have four stops. And so that's part of that consolidation that you see.
Okay.
You can see, if you look at the number of stops on some of these routes now compared to the number of stops on the new routes. You can see that there's quite a bit more stops on the new routes this year. Just because we were able to consolidate some of those cuts into existing routes. I know our Assistant Transportation Supervisor was so lucky to have him. Because he did come with a ton of routing experience, which is actually a really kind of challenging thing to find. He, this summer is planning on reworking all of the routes to have greater efficiencies than we're experiencing. He, this summer, is planning on reworking all of the routes to have greater efficiencies than we're experiencing right now. So it's just, it's really neat to have both him and Summer. Summer does routing as well. So it's great to have two people that can do as much as they're going to be able to do this summer.
Bring different perspectives.
We're also making some updates to the website now, because our Route Finder software can show every kid that lives in that zone, whether or not they're registered to ride the bus. So we're making some updates to the website, so that if a parent's looking online, instead of, if they look up their address and nothing comes up, they, they call the transportation office. So we're actually putting in there that this is a non-transportation zone, so maybe that'll help alleviate some of the calls to the transportation office.
That'll be good.
Because I think that was the hardest part with these changes. Not having that information in online resulted in inundating our poor transportation team. And it was taking a while for them to respond to all the voice messages. And so there's some frustration on the timeliness of return calls. And they prioritize the ones that were actually registered to ride versus the ones that were in a non-transportation zone. So we're hoping by making that change online, it'll help inform families as well.
Good. Sounds like progress.
Absolutely.
Do we need to have any other conversation?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I will pass on your links.
Okay, moving on to the discussion of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten ish policies for you. There's a lot of them.
A lot of those top ones were just a little bit of
Minor language change, although there was some statute corrections on elections. It was, I believe, statute modification two for the taking oath. The only thing changed was just grammatical on the oath of office. I guess there was nothing that changed on the resignation. Vacancies. Well, it's pretty much just cleaning it up, I guess, and minor grammatical changes.
Okay. On the hiring process and criteria, the first paragraph reads really weird.
Board of Trustees holds the legal responsibility of hiring all employees. This policy establishes consistent procedure for recruitment selection, selection and employment across the district, ensuring alignment with Idaho law and the district's educational mission.
Do we start sentences with the word "and"?
Well, you know,
It sounded like it was listing consistent procedures for recruitment, selection, and employment.
There should be a comma. That should be a lowercase a.
Yeah.
Good catch.
Yeah.
I don't agree with those coaching assignments. I think that it should say
Where at?
Toward the bottom.
Okay.
I think it needs to say that we're gonna hire the most qualified person for the job. Not that somebody, just because they're certificated, a certificated teacher, they should, they should get the job. Is that what that's saying?
Are you talking about under coaching assignments?
Yeah.
Where it says, "For secondary school coaching vacancies, preference will be given to qualified, certificated employees."
Right. So I thought our, our goal is to do what's best for kids. So if we have somebody that's not a teacher, then, and we have somebody outside that's more qualified, then we should hire that person that's more qualified.
Okay.
If we're doing what's best for kids.
Okay. So, a reasonable change, I believe, could be, "For secondary school coaching vacancies, preferences will be given to qualified employees." Certification is not required. Certification is not required.
Well, because most of our coaches are street coaches, aren't they?
I don't know about that.
Yeah, about fifty-fifty. And so I, I would probably recommend, I'm sorry, recommend, for HR, I'd probably recommend language and they're not the most qualified employees, because we don't, they don't necessarily, an employee would be the most qualified candidate.
Candidate, yep. That's what I was thinking too.
So you want to, preferences will be given to qualified candidates. Certification is not required?
I think it should say, "For secondary school coaching vacancies, the district will hire the most qualified candidate."
And that's really just, on anything, it should just be, I think, I think in the past that they were just looking, they, they did give preference to people that were already teaching in the district.
In the school.
But we, that's not our practice anymore necessarily. So I think just scratching that whole
Yeah.
thing should just be taken out.
Yeah. We're gonna hire the most qualified person.
Okay, so what are we scratching? Are we taking
The entire paragraph.
So coaching assignments will be gone?
Well, it just should say, "Most qualified person."
Yeah, the Board of, this policy establishes consistent procedures for recruitment, selection, and employment across the district, ensuring alignment with Idaho law, district educational mission. I don't think that
I mean, if you got an NFL player that's not a teacher, and he wants to coach at Lakeland High School, then you should probably give him a job.
Depends on what team he plays on.
Yeah, I, I think that we can just take out that whole coaching assignment section.
So are you
Unless we, unless we say that all the same procedures will be followed
There you go.
as anything, as anything else.
So for, we can state, for coaching vacancies, the above directed
Well, it says sort of, hiring decisions will consider, but are not limited to, the following factors: certification, qualifications, training, experience, ability to relate well with students.
I think that that follows just the same with coaching and
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, so just removing the whole paragraph in its entirety?
Yeah.
Okay. So we can make that change. Strike that paragraph.
Would you like us to go back to the committee?
No, it doesn't need to.
This is just a discussion, so
Yeah, the board reads the policies.
Yeah. So if it's already been there and it's just coming to us for our final, or well, this is just our first read anyway, but yeah, I can, I think it should, just making that one change and then we...
Right. So, on student discipline.
I did have one more little thing.
Oh, on the hearing?
Oh, yeah. There should be an S under legal compliance, and then we have the, it's the fourth bullet in the legal compliance. It said, it used to say, "Each, each newly hired employee must complete an immigration and naturalization service form." But we, it was changed to newly hired employee must, I think it should have, be plural, yeah. Newly hired employees must complete an immigration and naturalization service. And that's it?
Perfect. Thank you for your input. Moving on to student discipline. Now, okay, so student discipline. There, there needed to be some language change. You're welcome to come to the podium.
You know I'm eager.
There needed to be, there was a request for language change on the notice of temporary suspension. So as a package deal, everything was brought to Policy Committee. I believe we read through thirty-three thirty. Because I can't just pick up part of the project. I think we read through thirty-three thirty. There were no changes that were... Oh, wait, no, that's not true. What is in green?
So, the green is, so remember how I removed it, because it needed to go back to Policy Committee, because there were a few tweaks.
Okay.
And, and you wanted to come anyway. So the green is just the suggestions from
Admin?
Admin, yeah. We reviewed it, so.
So then the committee didn't do its due diligence on it?
Yeah, that's why we were gonna, and then used it to pull it, or to put it back on, and we would just forget it.
Well, I, I don't recall thirty-three thirty being the one I thought there was
It was all of them.
Okay.
Can I jump in real quick?
Please.
Originally, you're exactly right. The spirit of this was that we had a couple of forms attached to thirty-three thirty that needed to be updated, primarily just with the superintendent's name, and there were a couple of other minor changes. One of the changes that I was requesting is that we take out some language that was specific to completing a threat assessment on the notice of suspension form.
The notice of temporary suspension.
The reason for that is, you know, most of the time when we use that form, notice of temporary suspension, it's not because we're requiring a threat assessment to be completed. And so it, it just threw parents off a little bit.
Panic, like, oh my gosh.
Yeah. And, and often, we would have administrators send it home with a post-it note, or a note on the side, or it just was unnecessary to have it as part of the form. Because starting a threat assessment by itself requires notification to the parents. So it just felt unnecessary. What I was informed of, coming back from the week away for Thanksgiving, was that the Policy Committee felt like there was a discrepancy in the due process, and that was one of the reasons why that paragraph needed to stay. And so Chairman Thompson, I apologize, I, I was the one who added these notes to thirty-three thirty, just because I, it was my attempt to further suggest how we could clarify that language, separating out due process and the process for a threat assessment.
Okay, so then, wow, okay.
Which then aligns better, aligns with the form.
And if that was out of term, then I totally
No, it's, it's, it's just, nobody likes change.
Yeah.
And the way everything is being done is, is just sort of in the circular motion. During the Policy Committee, I know Sierra called Mr. Taylor, and it, you know, he stated that you, there really was no need for this paragraph. Bottom line, what I concluded from our conversation was just that the paragraph was confusing. And the others in the committee agreed that maybe we should use language to clean it up. And so what I did at that point in time was I went back to the policy as it was written, and took out its language to add it to the form, which was, so, let's see, when we, when we ended this, it was, you have a right to a formal hearing, so the red on page one, so then now you've added the green, but all of that wasn't there when it was done in Policy Committee, and it was the due process procedures as identified in Policy three thirty to sort of minimize going into it where administrators are going to do a checkbox of either it's a no or low-level threat, a mid-level threat, a high-level threat, or a threat assessment's needed. So if that threat assessment needed box isn't checked, I don't see why parents would be freaking out, thinking that they're having a threat assessment occurring, because the box isn't checked. And referring back to the policy would help them understand what would prompt that, because in reading through the policy, it appeared that there was just minor, basically, mid, mid to high-level threats typically will run side by side with a threat assessment. So, in all fairness, all the green language I haven't seen before.
And I just, I do want to acknowledge that's
Well, I want to speak in on this one. I did, after we saw the changes, I reviewed it. I asked, I asked Assistant Chief Massey to review it, because I was concerned too about the language. And one of the things we did talk about is that principals determining level of threats assessment, and that was our concern in regards to that. And that's why he streamlined it as such, so.
But they're determining that based on the, when, when we're sending stuff to parents, that is marked on the form. At least, let me be clear.
Okay.
On everything that I have seen prior to the cases that have come before us with, under this new administration, prior to that, it was checked.
That we, that we did a threat assessment, or that there was
We, whether it was low, medium, high, that was marked on one of the forms that always came forward. So that's where me not understanding that all of this language was going to be added, because Mr. Taylor did say, hey, why don't we not put it on there? Let's put it back in committee. I was not told that there was all this additional language and changes, et cetera. Had I known that, I would have said absolutely, and sent it back to committee.
Well, my apologies.
Um, I just simply
The original plan to add all of this.
Well, and I just simply thought that we could have the conversation with the entire board and get direction on what to do with the policy.
Yeah.
So
Send it back to the committee.
Sorry.
Not a problem. Thank you for the motion.
That was well done.
All right, so we can send thirty-three thirty, thirty-three thirty F1, F2, and F3 back to committee and see what administration's recommendations are for changes, because then whatever's going on in the policy does affect and influence the forms.
Yes.
So.
And that was one of the reasons we changed. You guys made a really good point of you were aligning it with the policy, so. So we saw that, and that's one of the reasons for the change we were trying to align it to.
Well, yeah. Typically, when there's a policy, we usually bring all these supporting policies that come with it.
Yeah.
And sometimes we discover that we have policies that identify policies we don't have, so.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Jake. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the nonprofit facility rental. This policy was just reviewed and revised back in twenty-twenty-four, last May. However, it was brought to our attention a few weeks ago from a community member that we are astronomically expensive for nonprofit organizations or kids' sports, et cetera. Now, this person did her due diligence, because she spoke with Jessica about it. Jessica sent her to Rebecca, Rebecca sent her to Sierra. Sierra sent her to the Policy Committee. So the Policy Committee had the, the policies. But as I explained to this mom, that anytime a patron is concerned or frustrated over policy, they just need to come to the board, because the board is the one that makes the policies. So I'm bringing it forward, because this mom does have a valid complaint, concern about what we're charging for, you know, nonprofit organizations or student extra teams that are renting our facilities, because they're going into Quarterlane. And so Quarterlane's getting our community money, because our fees are too high. So that I don't think bodes well for, for community support when we're making our community teams have to go into
Well, if there are community teams, they should have seventy-five to a hundred percent of our, our students on, in, if they're truly a community.
And she does not, and that is Rebecca Davis.
Uh huh.
And that's the conversation she and I have had over the past couple of years. She doesn't meet the seventy-five percent rule. So even like Ryan Everlin's team doesn't meet the seventy-five percent rule. He goes to Post Falls in Quarterlane as well, so.
Because it's too expensive here.
Right.
Right. Which with what Quarterlane does is they have a nonprofit category. We don't have that. And I do think it would be beneficial for us to, I know Jess did a lot of work when this was brought back in May of twenty-twenty-four, and I know she searched near and far.
The problem is, is we have all these clubs, we have clubs that some of our kids are in. Yet if we have a tournament too, and this goes for tournaments, the tournament fees have went skyrocketing. The problem is, is all those clubs give back to our schools.
Right.
You know, and, I mean, just the Lakeland Wrestling Club has probably spent ten grand or more last year.
Well, that should be, the in-kind donations from those clubs should be taken into consideration when they're being charged. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with.
Yeah, it should be offset or something, like, oh, we bought a new mat for you guys, so take it off the top first. I don't know. Something has to be done, because we're just cutting the throat that feeds us, especially in sports. So, I don't know.
Well, no.
Well, maybe we can lower, I mean, would it, what if we just lowered the percentage of kiddos that have to be in from our district?
Like to fifty percent or something?
Down to, oh, I.
Sixty?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking sixty, because then at least the majority
Right.
would be our kids still, but then it would give the opportunity for more of those groups to to qualify for that, that category.
Our prices are significantly more than Quarterlane's.
Chair Housman, when we did this, we looked at all local school districts and kind of came up with an average. So even though Quarterlane, it's blessed to have a very large levy.
Yeah.
A lot of communities that our district does not. So we did take an average of the area of Marler and Idaho to come up with those rates.
I understand that. But I do think we have a tendency to sometimes approach these matters extremely black and white without actually considering who are we turning away and why are we doing it? And is that really, I mean, is that really the best use of?
It's a hard balance.
It is, it is a hard balance. I agree.
The facility, having personnel care.
I agree.
Doors getting open, all of that stuff. There, there, it is a hard balance, for sure.
Yeah, but then we give the city free rein.
That's the MOU that's.
I know, but that's.
Negotiate that.
Yeah, that's not right. They're making money off our facilities.
Right.
I don't disagree, but.
So that needs to be.
With the city.
Yeah, that needs to be looked at. I mean, I'm sure Spirit likes the same way, right? You know, parking racks.
They have to provide a roster and show that their students are within the seventy-five percent rule, so.
That is correct.
And they presented us with an MOU.
They did.
Rachel, that's a great idea.
Rengegate.
I just, it's just frustrating that they have a whole department that, and they make money off of our school district. And we get nothing. And it's not just making money, it's wear and tear too, because our gyms are full twenty-four seven.
Yeah, when they're collecting participation fees from the kiddos, what is that going to? Because the coaches are volunteer. I mean, yes, they pay the referees. I understand that, and I, I understand that that is, that is very, very expensive, but.
Well, yeah. We may need to just.
Take it back.
Yeah, revise this to where, you know, everybody pays to play, but we make it more reasonable so that we can be more inclusive of the community.
And maybe we just make it more affordable for the teams that aren't reaching that seventy-five percent, maybe.
Well, because they, yeah.
Maybe we don't, maybe we don't need to give it to everybody for free, but maybe we reduce our fees
Right.
to be more reasonable.
Right. I think that would be hugely beneficial, because it's, you know.
And maybe we do different categories. If, if you have sixty percent, it's this cost. If you have seventy-five percent, it's this cost. Hundred percent, it's this cost.
There's always.
Nobody wants to manage that, though.
No, that's, but that's been a really difficult perk. Anytime a roster's turned in, Rebecca takes the time to go through and look up every single person on it to see if they're a student in our district, to see if they meet that criteria. It's, it's, it's a cumbersome process. It takes her a lot of time. And so I just try to be respectful and find that balance and that as well. We unfortunately can't take it on their honor that their roster is, because it's, it's not. And then it's unfair that you get a team that maybe wasn't.
Honest.
Honest, and then you find other teams that are like, but they're not honest, and they're being held to the standard of. So it, it becomes a difficult thing to place. It really does. I'm, I'm open to anything with this one. It's just challenging, because as Trustee Quimby said, we do have a cost of people using our facilities. And yes, the wear and tear. I would love to open it up a little bit more and charge maybe less, but it's still not necessarily going to cover all the needs that needs to be.
I was gonna say, they have to bring their own toilet paper, though.
Yeah.
You can get a cut made, but you gotta bring your own paper products.
Well, it, we, but it's just not even that. You're looking at dirt on the field, you're looking at scuff marks on the courts. I mean, there's so many things that have to be taken into consideration with this. I don't want to, I don't want to sound like the bad guy that's like, I don't want people using it, but we need to be, there is a balance of being fairly compensated, so that our students that are actually in this district and get to use this as part of their course of the day in the school have nice of facilities still, despite what's being used outside of school hours.
Right.
And we want to give access, but again, you lower fees, that means they're going to be actually even use more, if it's even possible to solve.
Well, we're pretty.
It's pretty loaded already, isn't it?
We love it.
Yeah.
Right, but when we're not charging the biggest user of our facilities, I mean, maybe.
We have a meeting with them here soon, don't.
Yep. We should.
That's something like, we can always renegotiate.
I agree.
We're going to have to.
We have to.
Because it's not fair to.
Everybody else, yeah.
Absolutely. Well, we're going to charge these rates in there now, yeah.
Yeah.
It was different when we had free water or whatever.
We do not have free water.
Now that we don't have free water.
So many more meters on.
Yeah. What's the price of that go way up?
It did.
It's going to keep going up too.
Free water, really? We need free water?
We have one spot where we.
We had free water.
We did.
Wow, okay.
What was it?
Not all of it was free, but there.
It wasn't excellent.
It was a.
Water, it was.
Waste water?
Waste water, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's got a good fertilizer.
Sweet.
You said that, not us.
Okay, so with respect to this policy, what should we do with it and the fact that, you know? Should we?
Just needs to be reviewed and, I don't know.
Yeah, if we could look at more than just the, the Quarterlane.
I know the hub charges like ninety bucks an hour, doesn't it?
We did. We compared it to like, to Saint Mary's, like, a lot of surrounding districts, not just Quarterlane.
But if we could see that to go along with what our rates are, so that we could.
We could even pull some of Southern Idaho too, and bring it back to the committee if that's what you'd like.
Well, I do think that we need to place in consideration, you know, what are, what is reasonable to charge city usage? And then I get the seventy-five percent, but maybe that's not what we need to focus on. What if it's nonprofit youth sports or, you know, whatever other words they call them these days?
When we were, when we were writing out the, or letting real life use our uh, school, were they being charged?
Mm-hmm.
Were they?
That was before me.
Yeah, I was wondering.
But our fees were a lot lower then.
Yeah.
So for the commons, I think it was twenty dollars an hour, which is now eighty dollars an hour.
Right.
So.
Again, to your comment on nonprofits and sports, again, I want to make it our, our kids the priority, you know, and I think that's why it was set to seventy-five, which
Right.
which was unique. I've never seen anything like that, but I love it because it does make our kids the priority. So that's what we want.
I, I hear what you're saying.
Yes, ma'am.
But if we're constantly saying we're, you know, supporting our community and we're going after them for levies and we're, we're making these promises, but yet when they come to us, we're like, mm, sorry, it leaves a really bad taste in people's mouths. And so to be respectful of the fact that we've made all these promises that we're, you know, in, we're giving back to our community when our community's going into sistering neighborhoods because they can't afford to be in our community, I do think that's a problem.
Okay.
So.
Rebecca, you did say our, our facilities are being used and pretty full, right?
But it's mostly category two, using our facilities, which there's no attach unless they're having a tournament. So we have wrestling tournaments coming up, and Kelsey has volleyball tournaments coming up. And those are the groups that are really getting charged.
Right.
Is the tournaments. It's not coming from the everyday usage.
Right.
It's the for-profit ventures.
Yep. We don't really make any money off the day-to-day use of the school. It's tournaments.
We're just trying to recover costs.
We're trying to cover supplies.
Oh, yeah, supply, yeah.
It's not even maintenance, it's just supplies.
Yeah, trying to get paper goods back. I like your idea, by the way.
So cat two does get charged, right?
No.
There's a typo on the fee schedule. It should have cat two as zero and then cat three, cat four. So there should be a cat two column that says zero. So that does need to be fixed, that table's incorrect if you compare it to the policy. Correct, your opinion?
Yes.
Yeah, because you just said.
Policy doesn't have it like down in the categories.
The categories are broken down in the policy, not the, the.
Fee schedule.
The fee schedule.
No, I'm looking at the policy.
That is the fee schedule. There should, there's more to.
Community use of school facilities forty-two-ten.
There should be a definition in this somewhere.
I remember us going over those definitions.
Thirty.
I thought it was for forty-two-ten and P, but we couldn't be.
Try P.
It is under P.
It's under P, that's what it's at.
Forty-two-ten.
Yeah.
Oh, category one, two, three.
Yeah, I knew it was there. I'd read it. Like, I knew it, yeah.
So there should be another column. So cat one and cat two should have their own column of zero on the fee schedule. And then cat three and cat four would be the other fees.
Why do we have two, why would we have two columns that have zero, that charge zero dollars?
Category one is our MOUs, and then category two are school-related groups, our charter youth groups, our industries that have that seventy-five to a hundred percent Lakeland school district students. So there was a differentiation between the governmental entities of the district. I mean, we could definitely combine them into all being a cat one.
I think if they're being charged the same. Yeah, we don't have a category four, so I'm not, I'm confused what.
We used to.
Okay.
In the, in the old policy.
So it definitely needs to be an update. That was an oversight, I think, when the, when it went through the revision draft process. I think it was an oversight that it didn't get collapsed correctly.
Yeah, because cat one and cat two, if those are both zero and cat three, but then we have the chart that shows cat one, cat two, cat three, and cat one is the only one that doesn't get charged, but cat two and three do. So there's two different groups that do get charged.
And Rebecca, for the most part, you're only using that cat.
Category two gets charged if it's a tournament. There is a caveat in there in the fee schedule that shows they're charged if it's a tournament.
Where's that at?
Go to forty-two-ten F1. The second page.
All tournaments will be charged.
All tournaments are charged cat, cat three fee, so.
There definitely should be some revisions to make this.
Okay, yeah, this has to be, it has to be redone because we're not charging per our fee schedule. If that's what's actually happening. Cat two is not being charged, but cat two is, has fees in cat two column, doesn't.
Yeah, and while you're saying we have a cat four, we don't have a definition for it, and it's not on the fee schedule.
No, it was in the old.
That was in the old policy. Sorry, it's been a little bit since I've looked at this one. I think it was in twenty-twenty-four.
Twenty-twenty-four.
But I do know that we noticed after it was combined that there was.
What would go in category four?
Nothing at this point, because we, we changed the wording for cat four, so that it's not cat three.
Gotcha. All right. Do we need further discussion on the nonprofit facility rental other than we need to fix it?
Go into policy, right?
All right. Moving on to the last item, the board leadership team.
Does that mean?
Was that?
You know.
I just was looking for whoever.
Oh.
Oh, I, I brought it up. I'd like the board to start meeting with all the department heads in the district once a month or something, or every two months. Because I want to hear directly from their mouths what's going on in our district.
Okay, so, so we already get the reports from.
I just want to have an executive session, and they can talk about whatever they want.
Every month, an executive session?
Or every two months or something. Because I feel like there's a lot of people that want to say stuff, but they can't. And, or about employees or whatever, so I say we do it in executive session, and then we, they're the ones in the, on the ground every day, they know what's going on. And we can just have a conversation, you know? If there's problems, there's problems. Then we can figure out what we need to fix, you know, without.
Are you talking about department heads or are you talking about principals of buildings?
Department heads of the whole district. And get any ideas they have or, you know, whatever.
So this, this would be to encourage them to come.
Yes.
To us?
Yes.
Okay.
So I don't know how we do it or, but it was just, you know, my wife works for the resort and. So I don't know how we do it or, but it was just, you know, my wife works for the resort and they have staff meeting every Thursday. All the department heads come together and they have a conversation about what's going on, what needs fixed, what, what needs to happen. And I just think we, I mean, unless you go to every school and talk to every principal all the time, you don't hear anything, you know? I mean, I know you're up north and you talk to people. I talk, I'm at the high school and I just think we're missing out on a lot of stuff that we could, uh, find solutions to or problems that they're having.
Well, we have the district leadership team that's made up of, well, I'm assuming we still have it. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's state. Any board members welcome to come along? I mean, it's.
What did you say? That state?
No, no, it stayed.
Oh, oh, state. Okay. I'm like, wait a minute.
Any board member can come to that meeting that wants to.
Okay.
State.
Yeah, yeah, it's state. I would encourage it. It'd be great to have a board member to, you know, to come to those meetings.
But the board leadership team, I mean, the district leadership team is all department heads, correct? It's, or, okay, let's start over.
Is that all?
Who's on the district leadership team?
Good question. So, um, human resource, um, finance, uh, instruction, uh, me, um. Special education, Chelsea Southern Two. And Norwood. Yeah, that's it.
She's probably meaning more the operations team.
The operations are all.
Yeah, operations is what we had. Yeah. Yeah, that's what we had today. All logistics, uh, where we had all principals, directors. Um, yeah.
So there's a leadership team too?
So.
District leadership team and operations.
Operations, that's what it is. Sorry.
And then the admin team.
And then the admin team on top of it.
And then admin team includes all directors as well.
Okay.
Sounds like they're all, they're having regular meetings. Are we afraid that people aren't coming forward?
No, I just wanna, I just wanna hear from the people on the ground that deal with the schools every day, you know? And get their opinions and get their, you know, what's going on.
So Trustee Quimby, um, you guys do have policy that allows you guys to enter the schools at any time? And so you are free to go check.
I know, but the problem is, Brooke, is I go to a school and I come back and I say, well, this person told me something and then I'm called a liar. That didn't happen because they don't wanna use their name. And that's wrong.
It's, yeah, it's hard. It's, I can see where that's hard and usually, I mean, we do have to have statements, um, that have a name to it whenever there's a complaint.
Well, they're afraid to use their names or.
Well, and you guys have also, um, have invited in certain staff members into executive session.
Right.
And stuff.
But usually it's because of a big problem that's happening and that it's not being addressed.
And so.
And we have to coax them in here to talk to them and that's wrong. You shouldn't be afraid to speak up in this district without being targeted.
Right. So, um, I just wanna give just a little bit of an example too, cause you've been in the military and you've always followed that chain of command, right? So there's a chain of command also in the district, but I mean, I think you guys have access. You guys are great at getting out in the buildings and accessing people. And I mean, and at any time, like I said, you guys have been able to invite people into executive session. If you think they're afraid, invite them into executive session.
Well, it's not only that. It's, okay, so principals are the chief executive officers of their building.
Yep.
Okay, but they can't always do what they want, but they're in charge of their buildings.
Right.
But they can't do it because you guys put a hold on everything. You go, oh, you can't do that. You can't fire that coach. You can't do this. You can't do that. There's all these rules. They're the chief executive officer of that and that is in our policies. So something's going on where people need to be able to do their jobs, hire, fire, reassign, or do whatever they want in their building.
Within the guidance of law. Within the guidance of the law, they should be able to do that within the guidance of policy and guidance of.
But the law says we have the right to do that too, and some of that's been stripped away because it's on the IBB now. Our management rights to reassign or hire or fire or do whatever because we are handcuffed by the IBB. Those are our management rights. Extracurricular jobs is the board's, but it's in the contract. It needs to come out of the contract.
It gets really hard when you have actually a legal binding contract, like with certified staff, there's a legal binding contract.
That's the problem though.
And, and, and you have to have that contract by law with certified staff. It, it's just there.
Right.
With classified staff, I can tell you, when I went into this director role, they were actually issuing contracts to street coaches as well. And I went to Idaho Ed Law Conference and they're like, do not do that. Do not issue them a contract because then you're stuck with them until the duration of the contract. So we do not issue contracts to street coaches for that reason.
But there's this, this.
But when you have a contract.
Yeah, but there's this thing that everybody thinks that you can't hire and fire coaches around here and that's been going on for a long time.
Absolutely can, but if there's a contract in place, you have to let them fulfill.
But we give it to teachers only.
To certified staff.
Yes.
It's a supplemental contract.
It should be the same, hire, fire at will, Idaho law for a street coach or a teacher.
Yeah, and at law, for a law, we, if they are a teacher, we do have to provide them a contract. I did. I did look into that. Same thing. But as long as they have a contract, they have to process.
We take the power that's supposed to be to a director, an A D, and his hands are tied because he has a contract. He can't get rid of them.
He can get rid of them at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Not rehire, I mean, for certified.
But they never do.
And get, get rid of them if there's something egregious that is happening. Absolutely.
Yeah, but it, it never happens. They have to be put on an improvement plan and they have to track everything.
Yeah.
They have in the past.
That was past administration. That.
That's why it needs to be out of that, out of the IBB.
That was past administration.
Needs to be separate.
Yeah.
But even if it's separate, we still have to do contracts for the certificated.
We do by law, yeah. But at least like I said.
I'd like to see that law.
Sure. Absolutely. I'll look it up for you and I'll send it to you.
That's it.
So on that note, um, with respect to the board leadership team, are you comfortable just moving forward that if there is a concern that is brought to you, asking that person to join an executive session?
No, I wanna talk to all the principals that are running our district every day. They're on the ground. They know what's going on. They talk to the parents.
Okay.
I wanna hear from them directly what's going on. I mean, I got teachers telling me there's janitors taking breaks, watching movies. That's not right. There's, there's stuff going on in this district and there's not a lot of supervision. We got people coming in on weekends or holidays and I don't know what they're doing. Nobody knows what they're doing. Cameras haven't been installed. It's been three years. Why?
That's crazy.
It's, we ordered these cameras to be installed. They're still not installed. So somebody's not doing their jobs. So that's why I wanna talk to all the department heads and just have it out. You know, we had to go through and redo maintenance. We had to rehire everybody. We let the new supervisor come in and do that. And I think we need to hear from the directors of what's going on.
All right. So how would you like this board leadership team to look?
I think all the department heads from everybody outside of this district office.
Okay.
So all the principals, the, the supervisor of the bus barn, maintenance, um, I T. I mean, we have, we have people that refuse to do work around here. It's ridiculous.
Well, we did have that problem.
And you can't drop, you can't drop names because we're not in the executive session. So we'll have an executive session and.
Alls I can tell you is the door is always open.
No, I know that.
Yeah, and, and.
But people don't wanna say their names. They don't wanna be, come forward.
Right. I, I get it, but I, I assure you, if you come in and have a conversation with me, and I get it, and hey, look, I, I don't feel like we have anything to hide. I, I have a lot of.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying it's you. You can't be everywhere at once. That's why I want them to come in and opt out of it.
And I'm saying if that's what the board wants, absolutely. If that's what you, if that was, I, I'd support that.
I don't think there's anything wrong with it, you know?
I think the conversation with the board is fine. I, I just, just know that if you bring those concerns to me, I promise I'll address them.
That's what we'll do. We'll listen to the principals and the heads and.
Well, they, they talk to me on a pretty regular basis. Chairman, uh, not chairman, but, uh, Assistant Sue Massey, we, we have regular monthly meetings.
I'm sure they talk to you guys all the time, you know, but there's some stuff they don't wanna tell you.
Okay.
I think, you know?
That's fair. That's your opinion.
So you're gonna require them to come into every, I just, I just wanna know the logistics of.
I don't know. I mean, you guys have staff meetings at post-volts, right, at the city?
Right.
Right.
But we don't have our council members come into our staff meetings either. So that's, it's different. That's why, that's why I'm asking about like the logistics of how or how you wanna see that to be.
I don't know. I mean, if we're talking about personnel or, you know, people are doing, people are doing, um, refusing to do work or, or stuff like that, we can just have it in an executive session and have a conversation about what's wrong, what we need to fix, you know, and make the district better. You know, if we're wasting money somewhere, why are we doing this? They, they have, they know what's going on. They talk to the parents all the time.
So do we, do we make it known to everybody that if there is ever even an inkling of a, of an issue that they come and address it with the board or, but that's not the appropriate chain of command issue.
No, it's not.
Per policy, that's not.
Right.
They should be going to the superintendent and then he can bring it to us.
Right.
Um, but if there is somebody that is concerned, then absolutely they need to come to us. I just don't wanna.
I just wanna hear from the principal.
Already working seven days a week as it is. I don't wanna require them to also come to our four, five, six-hour meetings.
Right. Well, I don't think it would be that long.
Want to.
I don't know. I'm just trying to think a way.
You're ready to cancel. Thank you.
I know. Should've left.
Just think how long the second.
I don't know. Just think about it and, you know.
I think.
Chairman.
Just trying to make it more streamlined so we all know what's going on. We can't, I mean, yeah, I can go to, if they can start paying me, I'll go to every school every day, you know? But I got a house and a wife and everything else.
Says it all, but you're more than welcome on the logistics meeting, which we have once a month if you'd like to come to those meetings.
But the principals aren't in that, right?
Yeah, they are. Everyone's in that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Just be careful with that ex parte communication.
Yeah.
That you're having with people and not bringing it to the rest of the board.
I can't bring it unless they tell me to bring it, cause then I would violate their trust.
It's best for them to bring it. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Well said.
Do we need to have any further discussion on the board leadership team request?
No.
Okay. Dates to remember for our policy committee meeting is December eighth, executive session on December tenth. Meeting on December eleventh and the policy committee meeting on December fifteenth. Do we have any input for future agenda items?
That did change, uh, to the twelfth, that, this meeting.
Okay. Gotcha.
I'm pissed about it.
Uh-oh, that's not good.
The twelve?
I think it's the twelfth.
Uh, no, the twelfth is a Friday.
Oh, my bad.
I am not coming on a Friday. Sorry.
Tagged to the eleventh.
Tagged to the eleventh. There you go. Thank you. I knew it changed. So that's correct.
So this is correct. Sierra.
Come on, twelve, let's go, Sierra.
All right.
You're touching great.
Thank you for the correction.
On that note, uh, I guess we'll move to enter into executive session with Idaho code seventy-four-two-zero-six A-one-A.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, wait, we can't.
Oh, yeah, never mind.
We can't go into executive session.
Correct. We don't have enough for a quorum to go into executive session. So that will have to be tabled and, um, well, just not happening. And we'll take that up at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
All right. So on that note, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. It is seven fifty-seven.